Good evening. It is now six o'clock and we will, I will call the, what day is today?
6th of September 17th.
Thank you. This is Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, City Commission Meeting Two Order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Adamchek?
Here.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Present.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor, we have five Commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have three proclamations this evening. The first has been requested by Sarah Larson, Laura Renfro, and Dr. Susan Metzger, representing the Daughters of the American Revolution. Whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will be commemorated, which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Susan Adamchek, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week in Manhattan. And I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, and I urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American, with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness whereof, I hereby hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, to be affixed this 17th day of September, 2024.
Thank you. Can we speak?
Sure. Okay. Congratulations. Do you want to make your remarks?
Sure.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mayor. The Polyogden D A R chapter is very proud to celebrate Constitution Week as the D A R was the first, actually, to petition Congress for Constitution Week celebrations in 1955 and then brought into law, signed by our great 34th President from the 34th State of Kansas, Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956. Around town, we have different activities going on. At our last chapter meeting, we actually had a nice Constitution bingo with a lot of fun facts. We also passed out 577 pocket constitutions to the elementary schools' 4th graders around town, and then also we have displays in business windows throughout the town, too. So, we're very excited. There's actually fall on Constitution Day. Today is actually Constitution Day, so we're excited to celebrate with everyone.
Thank you. Our next proclamation has been requested by Big Brothers Big Sisters of Manhattan. We will be joined by Michelle Sink. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay.
Kendall Getzman.
Kendall Getzman?
Yeah. And then Melissa Soltan.
Okay. And Melissa Soltan. Whereas the young people of Manhattan are the future leaders of our community, whereas many of these young individuals require effective mentoring programs to navigate various social and financial hardships, and whereas Kansas Big Brothers Big Sisters plays a pivotal role in substance abuse prevention, delinquency prevention, literacy initiatives, and more through its mentoring efforts, and whereas the Big Brothers Big Sisters Organization in our community provides quality activities and a nurturing environment through mentoring, ensuring our youth have the support they need, and whereas Kansas Big Brothers Big Sisters, serving Riley County, have celebrated over 30 years of service to the community, now therefore I, Susan Adamchek, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 24, September 2024, as Kansas Big Brothers Big Sisters Month. In the City of Manhattan, and I urge all citizens to join with me in recognizing and commending the Kansas Big Brothers Big Sisters Organization for their exceptional and impactful service to youth. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Manhattan, Kansas, to be affixed this 17th day of September, 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you. Can we take a photo of us?
Sure. Yeah, we don't have a fitness.
We did, yeah. We offered a tree.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Facing you.
And we have one last proclamation tonight. Michael Roskalla. We have been requested to identify September as Recovery Month in our community. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and overall wellness, and prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover from substance abuse and mental disorders. And whereas it is critical to educate our policymakers, friends, and family members, healthcare providers, and businesses, that substance use and mental disorders are treatable, and that people should seek assistance for these conditions with the same urgency they would any other health condition. And whereas almost 21 million Americans have at least one addiction, yet only 10% of them receive treatment, and drug overdose deaths have more than tripled since 1990. Whereas social support is crucial, and social isolation is a risk factor for relapse, and fiscal distancing measures and quarantine may be especially difficult for people in recovery because they limit access to meetings of peer support groups and other sources of social connection. And whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Pawnee Mental Health Services observe Recovery Month to raise awareness and understanding of recovery from substance abuse, substance use, and mental disorders. Now therefore I, Susan Adamchek, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby declare September 2024 as Recovery Month in Manhattan, and I call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recognize the importance of recovery, and to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and mental disorders and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, to be affixed this 17th day of September, 2024. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
My name is Mike Roskalla. I am the CEO of Pawnee Mental Health. I would like to seize this opportunity to thank you for acknowledging the month of September as National Recovery Month. This signifies your commitment to the promotion of the importance of mental health and substance use disorder treatment. National Recovery Month, or Recovery Month, which started in 1989, is a national observance held every September to promote and support new evidence-based treatment and recovery practices, the nation's strong and proud recovery community, and the dedication of service providers like Pawnee, and communities who make recovery in all its forms possible. In 2023, the U.S. Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration published a report indicating that in 2021, 70 million adults aged 18 or older perceived that they ever had a substance use or mental health and/or a mental health problem in the U.S. It is not a surprise that the month of September is also Suicide Prevention Month. Suicide and recovery are closely intertwined. In fact, one in four individuals who died by suicide had been struggling with substance use disorder using drugs or alcohol at that time. U.S. Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration published some alarming data. More than 49,000 people in the U.S. died by suicide in 2022. That's one death every 11 minutes. We at Pawnee Mental Health acknowledge and promote the importance of recovery services and are committed to suicide prevention. We appreciate the City of Manhattan's support to recovery services and to the mission of Pawnee and for allowing us to get this proclamation signed. Thank you.
Susan, could you ask him for the number that you call? Sorry?
The number, is it 988?
988, is that the suicide prevention?
988 is the suicide prevention also for Pawnee anytime anyone needs care. In crisis, they can call 785-587-4300, and that gives you access to our recovery services, to our crisis stabilization services. We treat not only folks who live in Manhattan, Riley County, we treat folks who come to us from all counties. We are substance use provider, treatment provider. We are a certified community behavioral health clinic, and the phone number to call is 785-587-4300, or you can go to pawnee.org.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the important work that you do in our community. Those wishing to make public comments not related to items on the agenda can do so at this time. No one has signed up before the meeting. If there are other members of the public who would like to speak, please be sure to sign in and state your name and residential address or organization you are representing. Each speaker has five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the Commissioners nor staff will answer questions or debate an issue. Jessica, we're aware that's a commercial property. Can you state your residential address, please?
You've been represented. Nowhere in the rules does it state that I have to...
According to Policy Manual Resolution Number 022024B, at the podium, a speaker must state their name, residential address, and if applicable, organization they represent into the microphone.
Yes. It's not a residential address. That is, that is my residential address. I am not willing to disclose the exact place that I live because I'm a trans woman, and I normally don't say things that people like.
And because you don't live in Manhattan?
I mean, I do. But I will, I will resign and come back to this later. That is the way you want to play it.
You had a Springfield, Missouri resident speak for six minutes two weeks ago.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment on an item not included on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Commissioners, have you comments to make?
I just want to announce, we kicked off the Classroom Career Program in the 4th grades across the school district, or across all of Manhattan. So we have 28 business sponsors sponsoring every 4th grade classroom in Manhattan, and it's a really great program to expose kids to different careers. So this is our seventh or eighth year doing that, so just an exciting thing, and appreciate all the businesses that support that program. It's through the Chamber Program.
I have a calendar that tells what day it is all the way through, what you should celebrate on that day, and I try and carefully observe it, particularly Chocolate Chip Cookie Day. But today is, and it fits right in with the D A R's presentation, National Voter Registration Day, and it is very, very easy to sign up and register to vote in Kansas. And, you know, you always go down to the Clerk's office, you can Google it and find other places, or it's very simple, you just have to have one piece of identification, and it doesn't have to be a driver's license. So please, if you're not, I imagine everybody here is registered, but those who might be listening to us, get out there and register so your, your vote makes an impact.
I would just like to note that I had the opportunity to speak last week before the West Loop West Side Business Association and also the established business leaders of the Chamber of Commerce about some of the decisions that we have made throughout this past year. Both, participants in both groups expressed appreciation that they had a better understanding of the Commission's decision-making process and appreciated the updates. We will now move on to the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the Consent Agenda or at a different point on the agenda if Do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Clerk, City Clerk, will you please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make comments on any of the Consent Agenda items? Seeing none, we will call the roll.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchek?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. I would just like to note that as part of the Consent Agenda, we have designated three individuals to participate on two of our advisory boards. Constance Birdsong has been reappointed to the Frederick Douglass Recreation Complex Advisory Board, and Liz Beekman, and Vern Wirka have both been reappointed to the Partner City Advisory Board. So we thank you for your service to our community. All right. So we will now move on to the General Agenda. Comment from the public related to any item on the General Agenda is permitted. Each person, as stated before, will be limited to one speaking opportunity for up to five minutes for each item in its section. Our first action tonight will be to consider adopting the 2025 budget and the 2025 through 2029 capital improvements program.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, provide a quick overview. The three items tonight before you on the General Agenda, as the Mayor mentioned, is a second reading. First reading was approved on September 3rd. We also have first reading of a salary ordinance for you to consider. This is for the non-union personnel adjustments, which there are no cost of living and no merit adjustments. We also have the memorandum of agreement for the union. There is a 2.5% increase for 2025, in addition to an adjustment to Article 25 dealing with This is a summary we provided a couple weeks ago. We wanted to highlight just the percentage of property tax that goes into each of these areas. This can get a little bit confusing in terms of just what, where your tax dollars go, but in the general fund, we were roughly $4 million last year, and we're going to be close to just over $8 million in 2025. The special revenue is really a reflection, from a property tax perspective, of what funds RCPD. And then the bond and interest fund, obviously with the shift of 3 mils away from the bond and interest into the general fund, you see that reduction in percentage. But we did grow from 225 million to 229 million overall. Highlights, the 4.1% increase to the tax base, that's delivered to you all by the county appraiser's office. That's their process of going out January 1st and determining a value in a property. The property owner then has several months to approach them and appeal that, but those appeals are typically completed by the summertime, and then we are given a percentage and an overall tax base increase. We do have 2.76 mil increase for the general fund of roughly $2.4 million. We are recommending a no cost of living and no increase, as we mentioned, and then continue to monitor various revenue streams and make any changes. This is more of a reflection of just where your total property taxes are at. Again, with that $4 million increase, it's really a move out of the bond and interest for roughly half of it, and then the mil increase for the city services and RCPD and the library make up the remainder. This is a breakdown, an analysis of the mil levy itself. We provided this a couple weeks ago. It's here if we need to refer back to it in our discussion. This is a spreadsheet that we showed a few months ago. The Riley County and USD 383 have come in with their mil levies, had their hearings. They remained basically the same as what we projected a couple weeks ago. This is a carrying a house, really, from 2020 at a $200,000 value, and increasing it by the valuation each year thereafter, and also adjusting it for the mil levies in each year of 2020 through what we're projecting here for 2024. The reason there's a split in the date is because of the process it takes to actually get to a point where you all are adopting mil levies here in the September timeframe. The property tax bill you all will receive will come out in November with first half due in December, and then second half due in April of 2025. So the processes really overlap each other in terms of a calendar year, but we wanted to highlight of a property really starting in 2020. You can see the 1% growth, the 5.9% growth, the 9.7, that was last year, and then this year at the 4.1%. You can also then look at the total mil levy, and we had 155 mils, 157, 156, significant drop last year. We weren't the only ones dropping. The county was dropping last year as well. You can see the city going from 52 to 48, and the county going from 42 to 39. The county continued that trend even this year, as well as the school district basically hanging right around that 50, or that 60 mil level. But you can see the difference between 155, 157, 156, significant drop, and then a rebound on our end. It's a 1.25% increase from 150.376 mils to 152.277 proposed. For a $244,000 home, it is a $215 annual increase to your property tax bill, based on a property back in 2020 of 200,000, and it growing over the next four years at the rate at which the Appraiser's Office came in with a percentage for overall growth. This is a further breakdown of that same $244,000 house in Manhattan. If you, your straight mil levy calculation is that valuation times 11.5%, you get a taxable value, it's really your assessed value, of 28,070, and then you take it times the mil rates. All the mil rates for all the entities are out here to the side. This would be for, really, the bill you'll get in November that's due in December and April. There is a total identical to the prior slide of $4,274.43, 152.277 mils, and you can see the percentage breakdown, whereas the state of Kansas at 1%, school district almost 40%, Riley County almost 25%, we're just under 12%, PD another 19.5, library 2.8, and Library Employee Benefit Fund at just at .6. That's your 100% of your tax bill. We then break it down on a per-day basis. So overall, this property is spending $11.71 a day, and you can see the percentages and where your taxes go based on this statement. General Fund comparison, we highlight again, 23 actuals. We spent $39 million in the general fund. Again, this is where all these departments operate. This is our personnel, their contractual services, our commodities. This is our people out doing their jobs every day. We are proposing a million-dollar decrease for 2025 from what we spent in 2023. We're projecting about $38.6 million for this year, but the budget we have before you this evening highlights the variance out to the right, the $1.8 million decrease that we anticipate from where we were a few weeks, a few months ago when the budget Transient Guest Tax has been a topic throughout the entire budget season. Been a lot of discussion, a lot of different proposals, a lot of significant increase in requests this year. We do have some payments that we make on an annual basis. I think roughly you're talking about a $400,000 increase for a lot of the entities over and above what they receive for 2024. The revenue appears to be there, the projections are 2.75 million in transient guest tax for the 2025 budget. We are projecting around that same dollar amount for this year, and last year our actuals were over 3 million. So we've seen a little bit of a downtick in terms of hotel business, but it seems to be holding steady for this year after January. This is our breakdown of just where we anticipate ending the year 2025 at about a 9.23 million threshold. One of the changes that we've provided, the ARPA injection did drop to 3.88. We had spent some money with GFOA and some of our consultants in anticipation of the ERP system. We have a slide and a couple here that highlights that breakdown, but we've been consistent, really, on the other revenues and expenses that we have forecasted for you all. General Fund Forecast, again, just highlighting the assumptions of the one-time cash, the one ARPA... General fund forecast, again, just highlighting the assumptions of the one-time cash, the one ARPA, transient guest tax, looking at the three mils from bond and interest, the 2.76 mils increase in the general fund. And then we're looking at revenues and expenditures increasing by 3% thereafter. We're obviously going to have a conversation for the 2026 budget. We don't like to necessarily see this cash balance continuing to decline, so trying to get our revenues and our expenses to balance out. We feel like we've made some substantial gains from the 22 actuals where we had close to an $8 million gap. Our actuals in '23 were over, just under 5 million, and we're projecting about a million and a half, or about a million dollar difference this year. Are projected, and that's with all that cash coming in. That's with the four, almost 5.3, 5.4 million coming in. Next year, though, we're going to have to really get back into the revenues and expenditures and try to prevent this continued decline. This is that breakdown of the ARPA, highlighting the 763,000 spent on the consulting and acquisition of the ERP services. We had some additional ARPA consulting services as well, leaving the 3.885 million for the transfer into the general fund by the end of this year. Ready to stand for any questions you may have? Again, the two additional items on the salary ordinance adoption, this is first reading, but it's consistent with what you see from a budget sheet perspective. In the memorandum of agreement, we actually have an agreement with the union that goes through the end of 2026. Annually, we negotiate wages. Sometimes we do a two, on rare occasions, we get a three-year wage deal. This year is a one-year wage deal. And as I mentioned, Article 25 has to do with arbitration and how we deal with that situation as management. That's a summary of your three items tonight. Happy to answer any questions if I can.
The ARPA money is COVID money, right?
It is.
Yes, and I thought that that was pigeonholed for IT.
So the ERP system, we talked about that earlier this year. It could either stand alone and pay cash for that system, or we can debt service it. And the governing body, the commission, gave us direction to move towards a cash injection within the general fund instead of issuing all that towards the ERP system.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
What's our strategy with the bond and interest fund long term? Because the cash balance is going down, I'm assuming with us not putting any property taxes into that bond and interest fund. So how do we, how do we make that work?
Yeah, we highlighted earlier this year, Rain, I think we're at $17 million cash balance in the bond and interest fund. We obviously have a lot of sales tax going into that fund at this moment. A question was posed, and we felt like direction was received to go ahead and move those three mils. It's obviously over 2.1, 2.2 million. I think we're going to have to look back to the out years and look at that debt coming on and the revenues and the forecasts that we have. That mill levy has declined in the last six, seven years in the bond and interest because we have passed sales tax to help us with projects and debt. It's given that balance where it's given you the flexibility to move that mill levy down. Obviously, with three mils out this year, we're going to have to continue to look at that. I think you've got an opportunity with two sales tax questions that will be rolling off in the next couple of years. How do you want to structure those? Any of that for debt, any of that for projects, any of that for operations? I think those are some options from a, from a sales tax perspective. If there's no additional new revenues, you're going to be into the revenue discussion from a mill levy perspective, going back into the bond and interest. But the bond and interest has a lot of different revenue streams. It's not only property taxes. Clearly, people who like to look at our debt and look at our finances will get a little nervous with us pulling these three out. But the cash balance should hopefully level that out from a concern. But as that cash balance comes down, they're going to be looking for that stable revenue stream.
And how can we, and I'm probably asking, repeating myself here, but how can we start to work in capital improvements? Things are going to break, so next year, things are going to break, and we're going to have to pay for it. I mean, yes, we do have cash balance that we can potentially use to do that in an emergency. How can we prevent it from becoming an emergency, though?
Yeah, I think it's that philosophical approach, Commissioner Opelt, that, you know, it's been said many times in here. New city manager, new approach, new discussions with you all, the direction you all want to go. I think those things, we could repeat those right now. I think your retreat in January is going to be pivotal. We're trying to get revenues and expenses to balance out, and then I think you start to look at, can you continue to reduce expenses to create a gap? To get you capital expenditures, to get you equipment, to pay the people that are doing the job? Or do you look to the revenue side? And is that sales tax, is that property tax, is that fees? I think you've got a parking and rec department who's been up in front of you a lot in the last few months talking about cost recovery, which means increasing potentially the cost of your programs for people who are participating to pay more of their share. I mean, the expenses aren't necessarily going down, but there's a targeted increase in revenue. So we need to continue to have those conversations. Transient guest tax, obviously, has been on the table in a lot of different ways. We do a lot to help keep Manhattan attractive from a tourism standpoint. But so does the CVB, so does the ABA, so does DMI. There's a lot of groups out there trying to do that. It's a balancing act in terms of what service are you going to pay for? And what revenue streams are you going to try to leverage to do that?
Other questions or comments from the commissioners? John?
I don't have questions. I can make comments. I mean, I'll just come back to kind of what we were talking about at the last meeting, since this is the last vote. I know a lot of times the votes before it was always like, well, we can always take it down, or we don't have to make a decision. Well, this one, we have to make a decision because there aren't any more votes to go. When I look at the numbers, they're still the same numbers, but I kind of calculate some percentages differently. The, it's a 12.6% tax increase, but the part that's not the city controlled, which usually that conversation is staff doing it. Now I kind of come back, is that the police department, library are only going up 7.9. We're going up 12.6. That means our staff, it's gone up 23%. So that's a big increase. And I just want to revisit what we were before. I have a really hard time when we're not giving raises, we're increasing taxes, double digits. But yet, outside agencies, we're going to give anywhere from 20% to 100% increase for, for a total of a 25% increase. And that's money that we could use, I would say, use to offset some of this tax increase. And then we can look how we can approach things the next year. The other thing is, I brought up, you know, cost recovery to get that up to 30%, get us another close to $400,000 that we'd be able to take off. And I think that would be something we would just want to move and try to get up to that best practice, 35, 40% as we go into the out years. Because I think there is a good question, what do we do after this year? One, is we continue with that cost recovery? Two, we need to really, I don't want to give any increases, but challenge the chamber who's got the economic development contract, the convention and visitors bureau with the same amount of budget to try to, you know, increase the economic activity that we have. Also, as you mentioned, push deficiencies. We are getting a new city manager. When I go to the grocery store, I get a lot of questions, you know, why did that go up so much? What's happening? And I think we should have expectations that we're going to get some efficiencies and get a return on our investment. While these aren't a panacea, we do have other assets we can sell. We have the wreath fire station that, you know, I've heard there's some interest in. And, you know, we have the new joint maintenance facility. We have enough space to take care of everything. And did mention cost recovery, but also on the parks and rec side, I think we need to be innovative with the marketing, not only the signs in the outfield. Can we have sponsor parks, things of other nature, that I think we really need to be aggressive and go after and do. So, you know, I'd like to take this number down some with the transient guest tax and the cost recovery. Hopefully, someone's got some other ideas on how to get it down and try to take some of this burden off the taxpayer. And again, just from a philosophical part, I have a really hard time giving such big increases to outside agencies. We're not giving anything, at least right now, to social services. And I was, you know, talked about, should we cut them? I don't want to cut them when we're giving double-digit increases to outside agencies. And even if we made them flat, I think flat's the place to go, which is where we're at. But this is it. This is last night. I think we need to take some of these savings. And just again, to talk about the transit guest tax, I know that was back before, and people talk about the percentage. I mean, it is for the city commission to make that decision. Sometimes it seems like people act like it's their money or whatever. It really isn't. We've got things like parking services, we've got the streets to take care of. And there's a lot of things that go with having all those people come into town for events and everything else.
What'd you use for that 23% increase number?
I just took that number to that number.
Gentlemen, can you please
Yeah.
say out loud what you're looking?
What I'm doing is taking
He's just, yeah, he took the
The total of, you look at
12 million.
On your published mill levy. And if you just look at the total number, 12, 9, 9, 6, which is what is often referred to as the city controllable amount, and compare it to the 10, 5, 6, 7, that's a 23% increase. When you think about it, the police department and the library are only going up 7.9%. And they're a larger percentage of the total property tax bill. So to get to 12.6, the other half has to be pretty significant to get to that number. That's what it about comes out to, 23%.
Well, when I look back at 2023, and the mill levy was 52.154, and now we're talking about a mill levy of 52.925. We're really pretty flat with the mill levy. And we don't have the dollars that we had last year to kind of make up for the fact that we lowered the mill levy, three mils. So what we're doing is kind of just getting back to what the progression we would have seen had we not lowered it so significantly last year.
Yeah, I just want to, when you look at the mill levy, that's true. But when you look at the total taxes, the tax revenue did go up because we had such large valuations, close to double digits, like 9.7. And if you broke that down for residential people, it went up over 13%. So those residential people still saw, you know, pretty good tax increases, even though we took down that mill levy.
But I think some of that increase came from new buildings and things.
I think it was pretty minimal. Most of it was that residential side that went up just by appreciation.
John, is there an opportunity to revisit your suggestion to keep the budgets of outside agencies flat this year?
I mean, yes, that's what I'd like to do and use that as to an offset to the property tax. That's about 400,000. And again, I'd like to see that, you know, cost recovery as well, but maybe take one issue at a time and debate that one out.
So that 400,000, if you cut that from, that would come from economic development, or from, from chamber?
No, from the transient guest tax. In other words, we'd keep them flat, don't take anything away, but don't give any increases.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to think of a a marginal effect of taking that away or not, I don't know. What could CVB do with that extra money versus when we split that 400,000 across all of the taxpayers? I understand it would show that we're trying to keep the levy down as much as possible. But what's the, what's the impact of that?
I mean, it's always hard to tell. I mean, we're already at like 1.3 million for like, see, we're going to 1.6 million. I mean, how high are we going to go, you know, with that budget? Do we really think we need to increase it 20%, 20% or like the whole thing 25%? The whole, the whole group? And again, it's a way to say that, you know, we got staff there that are, you know, making sacrifices and ask them to do more with, with less. And I think it's the same thing here is, you know, do we really, are we going to get that much of a return on our investment putting in that 400,000? Are we going to really see that? I mean
What does that translate to in terms of reducing the mill levy? Are we talking about .5 or?
You're talking, you're talking about a half a mil. But see, that's the way it always, you can increment that in my mind to death, and you never take a reduction because it's only a little here and a little there. But those little hears and there's add up. I would add a lot more to this, but I'm at least trying to get something. And again, to me, I just have it very hard to say when we're making the taxpayer make more, to pay more, and we're making the city take less and not give increases. I mean, I guess if you really guess that this 400,000 is going to bring some huge windfall, you can make that argument. I'd like to, the other thing is, I want to keep that tax, I'm fighting to keep that base low because the higher we bring it, the more it's going to be compounded on the next time, and then build the next time after. So all these little ones, this half mil here, three quarters mils there, gets added on to the base, and then gets added on the next year and added on the next year. So in lots of ways, I'm fighting to keep that rate as, as low as possible so it doesn't compound anymore year after year. Because that's what happens when it's, it's only a half mil here.
But the flip side's true as well. We would be in a very different situation right now, this conversation, if the mill levy wouldn't have been reduced last year. So I think it's, it's the slower we are to recover, the slower we are to get where we need to be, the longer the hurt is going to be. The longer it's going to take us to dig our way out of there. And, I mean, my goal was to stay quiet until after public comment, and clearly, that did not, that did not work.
Yeah, you can make that argument. I mean, that's my one tax increase from Nirvana argument.
I know, and you and I, you and I argue about that one. Specifically, I mean, TGT is where a lot of the discussion last time did occur. I, you know, the comments last time were, you know, and this time, it's not fair to the city staff. And that's, those aren't the same comparisons. This isn't about, oh, let's just bump up and give TGT, you know, all those entities raises. This is taking that money and telling them, you, you need to produce more sales tax revenue for us. And the way, you know, there are a couple of ways that we're going to get property taxes down, and that's more people paying them, so expansion, or increasing our, our sales tax revenue.
Okay, and we talked about putting in key performance indicators and everything else. So are you willing to pull the contract if we don't see those numbers?
I'm willing to tie funding to where, where that is, yes.
Well, you can tie funding to it, but if it doesn't come, you're just going to lower their number a little? Are you willing to go find somebody else to do it?
So I think all of those are absolutely on the table. What
But I'd say make them produce first, and let's give them something versus giving them 25% and then say hit these numbers.
And when we're getting to the 25%, I know a significant chunk is, is CVB related to where we're at. I mean, I think we got to be looking at occupancy rates. We need more people in town, all of those things. We can get through that. I do want to point out, on downtown Manhattan, a large chunk of what DMI was requesting was for maintaining Houston street, streetscapes. We're spending millions down there. We've got Art and Light coming in. We know how important it is for people to have, I mean, all the things that make that area unique and beautiful, not, not just the roads and those, but the, I'm going to butcher it, Gina can talk about it later. But, I mean, we're talking about the lighting, the flower basket. People want it to look clean and beautiful, and that's going to, that does, placemaking does increase property taxes. So it's not, I do want to point out, on specifically with DMI's funds that they're requesting, there isn't there isn't an add to what they're currently having to produce this year, currently having to do. If, does that make sense? Like, we're adding a whole street that's getting redone as part of, as part of what that request covers. I, I'm still, I think we all know very much, on keeping the, I will, and I told John, I will concede, we don't have those indicators set up yet. And I think, though, moving that, pulling that money from TGT and just bumping it over either to reduce property taxes or, I mean, that's essentially what it is. That's, that's short-sighted. We're not going to be able to increase our revenues, sales tax revenues.
And again, we're not pulling money, we're just not giving a big fat increase.
Well, we're not, you're right. We're not fulfilling the request. I think my preference is if we have questions about how they're planning to use that and how we're planning to turn that into additional sales tax revenue, we need to re-task them with coming back and telling us how they're going to do it. We can keep the money in the fund and assign it later. I think my, my advocacy is just not, not pulling that and adding that to the general fund. If we need to see more and we need to say, here's what we expect you to do before we're going to give you any additional, I think absolutely we should do that then and have them come back and, and we can give them the funds that we think are appropriate. But I mean, John, that's just where, you and I have disagreed specifically on that point, on how to use that.
Yeah. I still think at the, the time we were at, we're asking everyone else to do more with less. We need to do the same here, and we need to try to keep that rate down as much as we can and then work on the goals the next year. Because all this is, is no one else seems to be coming up with anything. I keep trying to come up with ideas here and there, and everyone else just seems to want.
You, I mean, you have came up with some, some great ideas, and I think the cost recovery, I've talked with Aaron about that a little bit, and we'll hear from that in October, later in October. I, I think with that, we-
We got to vote now.
I know. I was saying with that, we can't, we can't count those funds, even if we bump it up to 30%. I do think, I do agree with you, we need to get up to industry standard. I think there's probably, it's probably going to move slower than you or I would want on that. We just can't count that as revenue. I don't think we'll know what will happen. If we keep cutting expenses, we may not be able to offer the same programs that we've always offered, which would cut into some of that cost recovery.
Necessity is the mother of invention. If you don't go to put it down, there's a number to hit, you're not going to hit it.
I think one of the issues is that we are trying to determine a budget today, and we will not have those discussions with the Chamber, with CVB, with the social service agencies, with Parks and Rec for another month or two. And part of what I would like to see, either at our retreat or prior to, is a discussion about how can we be budgeting for these entities when we have not yet had those discussions? Does that imply that we start the budget process a month earlier in order to start doing that? I don't know, but that's part of my concern, my reluctance to, to-
I mean, that's why I called earlier for, for making some decisions earlier, or pushing this beforehand. Because yeah, tonight, we're just down to the, down to the night. I mean, the sense I'm getting this commission is they just want to go with this number, go with the highest number possible. And it, we went to, it's the beginning, and we can always take it down later, and we kept going to the next meeting and the, and the next meeting. I mean, I mean, we can get the meeting over quick if you guys just want to keep, just spend the money. But I mean, I really, you know, if you've got that much confidence that this $400,000 all of a sudden materializes and give us all that extra stuff this next, next year, I mean, to say we're going to talk about it later, they did their presentations here, knowing we have to take a budget vote and vote on their request. We should have all the information we need at this point in, in time.
I mean, I do think our expectations of what they're producing changed from when they, when they first presented. I don't think there was a lot of pushback or a lot of questions necessarily or saying, okay, that's nice that you want these, but here's what we really need to see. That's a more recent discussion that-
Right. We heard we're supposed to get 60%.
We did, we did hear that, and I know that, that is a jump from, from last year. I, once again, and I, I told you this, like, I concede if we don't have the information, then, I'm not saying we grant it all right now, I'm saying that then we hold it in that fund. My advocacy is not to, I think it's very short-sighted, very quick to move it and, and reduce the, the property taxes with it because we aren't going to get that back. I think we keep it in that fund, have more discussions. If we need to see more, which is a new conversation that we've started, if we need to see more performance measures or create those in order to figure out how we are-
All I hear is, I don't want to hear anything that's going to take this number down.
I mean, John, I'll be honest, I'm significantly worried, the long-term future, if we do take that down. We're already seeing that our revenues and our budgets aren't matching. The other opportunity is, how far are we pulling the city budget down? We're under what they were last year, the expenses is what I mean. We're under what we were last year by 600,000, a million from there. I don't know, I mean, to me, those are the reasonable reductions. We've talked about others, we haven't really brought up again.
I thought you had some you were going to recommend.
I, I mean, I did. I've been working Scott over on the, on the fire department. I mean, I am, I am worried about where, how that budget has increased. I told you I was going to wait till after public comment to go through all of this, John. I mean, I was worried with where that-
Okay, well, let's go to public comment.
Karen would like to make a remark.
I would just echo Jamie. I'm really concerned that we have no money for capital improvement in this budget. Basically, if, if another roof falls in or that kind of thing. And it would seem to me that we're trying to get back to a level playing field, and we're not giving staff any raises. I really almost resent that. What we're doing is we're getting back to normal and trying to fund things adequately. And I think perhaps if there's money in the CVB budget, you know, we've got things like the parking structure falling apart.
We'll use the TG money for that.
That's, but we can't, we need to give them-
We can.
Well, so anyway, I, I realize that there are people who are trying to age in place who have problems with their property taxes and, but I think sometimes people don't realize that going up three mills is not $10 million, it's $105 for some houses. And that's up, I know, but-
Yeah, it's only a couple of pedicures, you said, so.
We'll maintain decorum at the podias, please.
I guess my, where I'm very unclear is what, what is our strategy long-term? I, I, I hear you, John. The way I'm interpreting what you're saying is, is it is, this year, let's, let's keep it low this year, but we're going to have the same conversation next year. And even with our, our four-mil increase, there's still, we don't have capital improvements, we don't have-
Pay raises.
Pay raises, and that's not going to go away. So do, are, are we just getting through this year with a budget and then hope that next year we can work on it more? And that may be the case because we've got three of us who've never gone through this budget process before. But it just, it seems like we are making a lot of reactionary decisions and suggestions, and I don't, I want to be sure that we're, we're all focused on the long-term health of the city.
Well, if you don't want to take the budget down, which I still think is the best way to do it, take the TGT, put the goal of the budget is for that extra revenue, and put it all into reserve if there's a problem. Because at least that way, we're not spending, in one instance, we're not spending the money, and on the second instance, we're putting an expectation out there to get to a certain level.
Did you just agree with me from earlier of keeping it in reserve?
I say that's better than giving it away.
Oh, you agreed with me.
It kind of sounds like a compromise.
Shall we open for public comment?
Yeah, but I think, I think we might have just made a, did, did we just, I, I think we might have found some kind of compromise that we may want to consider. So let's make sure we keep that in mind after public comment.
We will now open the floor for public comment. If anyone would like to address the commission on the matter of adopting the 2025 budget.
Gina Snyder, Executive Director, Downtown Manhattan, 3207 Valley Drive. So, John.
Yes, my bud.
Not today, not buds today. I do have to take a little bit of, you're kind of frustrating me because when you say this $400,000 is going to, what are we going to do? Produce a miracle?
Excuse me, Gina, just a second. Jared, can you set the timer? Thank you.
So I want to speak about just DMI. I don't want to speak about this $400,000. I'm asking for $183,000, which is little over 6% of the transient guest tax fund. And we do way more with less all the time. I've been here for 16 years, and we have had four increases in all the time that I've been here. We are not frivolant, we don't, frivolous, we don't, we're good stewards of the money. So right now, I, I don't want to be lumped in, I really don't. I want to stand alone, I want downtown to stand alone on our merits. Bring the metrics at me, I'm ready. I think that we can prove that we are successfully spending this money in a way that has massive return on investment. I also want to address that this is not just about flower baskets. DMI and the city have entered into a relationship for a long time about placemaking for economic vibrancy. That's, that's essentially what we do. And placemaking is a collaborative process. It is about creating public spaces that are vibrant, engaging, community-oriented. It's about design and beautification and safety and a sense of identity, cleanliness. It's a whole bunch of things. And it takes a relationship in order to make those kind of things happen. Placemaking is a powerful economic driver. It is, it is a fact, you can ask any economist that you want, pick, pick whoever you want to ask about placemaking, and they will tell you what placemaking does in communities, in cities, in urban areas, in rural communities. The most important thing that it does is increase foot traffic. And it's, when you create these intentional, functional spaces, it encourages people to spend time together. It encourages people to spend a lot of time in that location with their resources, making community with each other, shopping and dining, and, and wanting to have a sense of belonging in this area. And when people spend their time, they usually spend their money. It's about tourism. And when, again, placemaking is, is done with intention and it's well-designed and you have a cared-for public space with, with unique and impactful event programming, you are attracting locals and you are attracting visitors. And as we all know, because we've talked about it a million times over, visitors stimulate the local economy. I know Marcia would agree with me on that. They spend money on accommodations, dining, shopping, and events. Placemaking, this relationship we have with the city, the events that, that we do downtown also improve property values. This is a fact. A well-maintained, clean, safe, and vibrant space raises the value of nearby properties. Communities that invest in placemaking see increases in real estate demand. We are 100% commercially occupied downtown and residentially. We just moved a business into a closet because it was the only space that we had while they wait for a space to open up. That is a true story. It's, we, we have demand, we have created a demand in downtown. And by attracting investment, a vibrant, attractive public place signals that a community is thriving and innovative. Why would we cut ourselves off at the knees while we are doing so well? That extra $93,000 is a lot in, in our world, and it's pennies in this transient guest tax fund. It really is. I know you think the microscopic little, they add up, and they do add up. But you take that 93,000, additional $93,000 away from our request, then I'll tell you what, what you're not going to get to the, to the front porch of the city. You're not going to get a beautiful corridor that you just spent gajillions of dollars on for our brand-new neighbor, the Museum of Art and Light. We will have that void, that dark void that you mostly see during Festival of Lights and during, always. I think you know where I'm going with this. I hope that you will consider funding us at our full request.
Thank you, Gina. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
Hello, my name is Phil Preston. My wife and I live here in Manhattan. I'll fill this out in just a second. I would just like to make two points. One, she and I sent a text to all the members of the commission not too long ago. We had no response from anybody on the commission. I was a little surprised at that because we are voting citizens in town here, and I would have expected-
Excuse me, Phil, you do need to state your address, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. 4504 Grand Bluffs Court in Manhattan.
And excuse me, I will give you a few extra minutes. Did you send a text or an email?
Email.
Email, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, email. And anyway, in that, and, and just two quick points that I want to make, and, and I won't use up my whole five minutes. The unrealized gain that we spoke of, yes, property values are going up in Manhattan. It seems to be a popular city in the state of Kansas. But as senior citizens with fixed incomes, our income may go up slightly based on CPI or, or a government-mandated increase. But other than that, we're on a fixed income. So any, any gain we have in the value of our house is an unrealized gain. That does not go in the bank. But you're taking real dollars out of our pocket for that unrealized gain. And I know I said that, or we said that in our email, but I, I have to emphasize that again. The other thing is, as a tax, a property tax appraiser in California for my whole career, California dealt with this problem about these increases that, that cannot be planned for. And people like us on fixed incomes, you're going, with these types of increases that you're talking about for this year, you're going to force us out of our home here in Manhattan. And that's unfortunate over time. So the other thing that I'm not hearing in your budget discussions, as a senior manager in the assessor's office in California, always the discussion centered around essential and non-essential budget expenditures. I'm not hearing that here. There are things that I've heard from Parks and Rec about an indoor pool, and I don't want to pick on that. I know there are people that want that, but that seems to me like a non-essential budget item. Again, with all due respect to the director of Parks and Rec. But getting salt, one of the things on your consent agenda tonight, getting salt in case of snow. To me, that's an essential item. It needs to be there in case we have snow. Fixing potholes, things like that, those are essential items. But I hope that the commission considers that type of discussion when you're looking at these requests from the different department heads. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Thank you. Is there anyone?
Good evening. Thank you for having this meeting. We do need to get some things resolved, I know we do.
Dennis, please introduce your-
Oh, I'm sorry. Dennis Cook with the Aggieville Business Association. My address is 6854 Chincopan Circle. Just as a acknowledgement, and I'm sure everybody knows, but Aggieville is undergoing a lot of change. We're in a redevelopment mode. We've got a lot of construction going on. And, you know, and there are things that we must do. We gotta keep going on, you know, because we are an economic driver for a lot of things that do happen here in town. And we haven't asked for any extra money. I've been the director since 2019 and we've never asked for a change. And, but we do recognize that we are doing less than we were doing in 2019 because things have, you know, costs go up and we haven't made those changes. And so, what we're trying to do is get a real balance into Aggieville and help be the economic driver that we can be. So, we want to put our best foot forward. And we know that with construction and redevelopment, it's a process. And what we want to do is be as viable as we can. We're fortunate that we pretty much are, we got a new business that opened just last Friday. We got another one that's gonna open up here in another week. So, there is a lot of interest in what's going on in Aggieville, and we just want to try to keep up with that. So, that's the cause for our request, and I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you Dennis. Is there anyone else who would like to make any remarks? Public comment is now closed. Commissioners, have you any final questions of city staff?
Yeah, John was leading me to this one. Can we, Jason, will you change it to the, sorry, look alive over there, Jason, look alive. Jared's got it. Oh, I don't know which one it is. Where all the city budgets are.
Trying to be more responsive after the timer debacle, so I'm trying to be a little bit more responsive. Which one?
Good job.
Bottom, it's a green-ish.
So, I mean, this is something that, uh, keep going. There you go. This is what John and I were talking about. Scott has probably taken most of my wrath on this, on where we're at on our departments. And I mean, I ignored that 39-8 column, to be completely honest. Those were budgets that were produced. And so, when I've been looking at, how can we lower things? I'm looking at 2024 to the 38 budget. And I did have a lot of questions for Scott. I don't know if you want to pop up here, Scott, and kind of explain. I did have a big concern about the, what, $500,000 increase? I know the union is part of that. There's animal control, or the animal shelter had an increase, some commodities. But I did question about 200,000, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I believe that part of that is our staffing levels on minimum staffing.
It is. That's the bulk of it. We dropped down to 19. That's not ideal for us. We talked about it originally. It has an effect on not only the safety of firefighters, it has to do with our ISO rating. So, as a way, when we're in our expenditures, when the city manager directs that we need to start having target budgets, the first two areas that we go in to cut are training, and then we look at our staffing. Staffing is really hard, and we're actually working on providing you some details on that with overtime. We have about four different types of overtime. We have our minimum staffing. We have a multiple number of people that go on medical restricted duty because of the type of work they do. There is an effect of the parental leave within the fire department. We're trying to figure out where that's at. And then we have just the standard shift shortage that we have because we have vacation slots, we have medical leave, and we have a minimum staffing. So, there's all, it's complicated, there's a lot to it. But that's really where that 200,000 that we were talking about, we put back, we put back in there knowing that if there is a need, revenues aren't coming, those are the areas we're gonna cut. Ron and Jason over the years know that we're not gonna, there's an expected carryover from us typically, depending on how our staffing is. Back in August, we were also two over of our staffing preparing. We've dropped that. We don't have those individuals anymore. We're actually down one member on our operations side. So, that's kind of where that money is.
Thanks Scott. I mean, so when I've been going through this, and I've been working just about every department head over, except for Brandon, everybody's nice to the airport around here. Brandon's disagreeing with that. I mean, and those are some things, and I think when it comes down to it, what Scott said about if the revenues aren't coming in where they're at, then it looks like we'll go down to a reduction from 20 to 19 on minimum staffing as a potential cost-saving approach. I mean, I was willing to keep that. John, you had some other strategies. I'm gonna kick it back over to you on lowering that bottom line.
Well, my other ones had to do with where I just didn't see where we got the money back when we did the ATA, or we were gonna have the sale of that building pay for that. Well, first, Lee Mill was coming out of the general fund, and then it became kind of shadow money. And that type of thing. So, that's how I came up with a higher number. Again, I still like to get this down. I mean, I don't challenge people's budgets or go after the TGT or the organizations there out of some spite or something. It's just that I've been, the whole time of the commission, been a taxpayer advocate, and that's what I'm continuing to do. No, I don't want to do it and put the city in a very bad place. But I'm also one that thinks that groups need to be challenged in order to get to numbers. I will say that when you look at like the Chamber study and everything else, downtown was the area that had showed the progress. It came out of what was, what we saw there. Dennis, you've been beat up so much down there with everything going on, it's hard to tell, you know. You have no baseline to, you know, compare to. And I think the chamber is such macro, and with COVID, it's hard to tell. But the bottom line is, for the past decade, we've been stagnant. Jobs, population, everything else, so. And I know COVID was in the middle, but it was more than COVID that we've been following this trend. And one of our biggest things is cost, in housing costs. And we need to keep those down. And I don't know, just from the community standpoint, the people that, you know, come here and talk, to me, it doesn't seem like we really need an effort to try to chip away at this thing.
And I understand that. I do want to point out, we established it at four in looking at the numbers from the front end, seeing that that's what we felt like it could take. That initial number, I mean, we could have said, you know what, let's make the max six mills. And then maybe we would have looked like heroes when we brought it down to four. But instead, I felt like taking a more realistic and preparing people for that. And every person I've talked to, when they say, "How's it going?", I'm like, "Well, it's looking like four mills right now." I think that was the approach, at least I was going for, of seeing that's what it would take. It's still not getting us where I think we all wish we were. I mean, a few months ago, we were talking about making a, you know, a resolution order to not let that cash reserve drop. I mean, that was a whole conversation we had about how can we maintain that cash balance? And now, we're still not getting there. I do, I mean, I appreciate all of John's efforts, and I know we disagree on a lot of things, but I think pushing, to me, that 38 million is, in digging through it, that feels the lowest realistic without cutting services, which is what people are paying their taxes for, is to get the services. And it's no fun. I wish we weren't the group that was gonna raise them back up, the property taxes. But I just think that that's where we're at.
Could I just add that we haven't even talked about inflation? I mean, dump trucks cost more this year than they did two years ago. I mean, trying to keep everything flat really is negative. We're going backwards. And we're not spending the dollars that we should to keep things working for people. And again, you know, it's confusing, but your general fund money, your dollars that we're taking to provide you with police, fire, library, all those things, we're really basically going back to what we were doing in 2023. And there have been, I don't want to see fewer firemen around. I want to know that when, if I need to fire help, that there're gonna be at least, you know, one company come and the others to back them up. I mean, I don't want to have fewer police on the streets. I want to know that if I call, and I live by Aggieville, so I call occasionally, that they're gonna be there like that. And that's what I want, and I'm willing to pay for that because it's worth what the city is doing for me and what we're trying to do for the city as commissioners with more housing, with more tourists, with more, just people coming and spending those tax dollars. And should we look at something like indoor water, that will not be a property tax issue. That will be a sales tax issue. And you can vote against it if you want to. So, I just would like to suggest that we bite the bullet, go with four, and work on, if we feel that we're not getting the value we should out of any of our auxiliary groups, then we sit down with them in the next four months and say, we want to see exactly what the outcome you're going to give us and what it's gonna cost.
Again, I don't think the changes proposed is gonna, not gonna change police at all, not gonna change fire either. And we're not talking to any of those agencies. We're just talking about not giving significant increases.
But the not increasing their funding, their expenses are still increasing. And, you know, I was kind of struck when we saw between 2022 and 2023, our property and liability insurance went up 229% or something like that. You know, we've gotten the same roughly million dollars from the state for road fund since the 90s. You know, so our costs of doing business are increasing along with everybody else's costs of living. And so, you know, we should be having that conversation of what, you know, making those priority calls. And I know we've said a lot this last, this year, we're getting a new city manager. We don't want to make big changes, and I get that. But I really want us to challenge ourselves and to challenge city staff to put those priorities in place so that we can have those conversations. Because I don't know, I don't know that you're, what you want to cut is necessarily targeted to those essential services or those prioritized services. It's more of a general cut. So, and I'm having very conflicted feelings about all of this right now.
I'm just trying to pick out where I think the opportunity is with the least risk to it. And again, as I said before, if you just want to keep this mill levy where it has to come in, throw it into the reserves, just don't, one end is throwing in the reserves, the other end is putting the challenge out to hit that cost recovery number, put that in the budget, but you got the money in the reserves if something happens.
How would that look? What do you mean?
Just take up his cash balance and take up the cost recovery.
What do you mean? Like?
I mean, that's easily said. What does cost recovery look like for the roads department?
Well, I think he's just talking about parks-
No, no, I'm talking about Parks and Rec.
I don't, I don't think we can rely on Parks and Rec to sustain-
You don't. You'll have the money in the reserve if you got a problem.
I have not spoken with Aaron about his plans for cost recovery, but I think that they will be, I imagine, some of the challenges-
He can do it. It's the question, will the commission do it? Because what's gonna happen is they're gonna come here.
I mean, it's, cost recovery is not gonna be the most popular plan. And for many of the people who are gonna be impacted by property taxes, who are more significantly impacted, might be the same people impacted by Parks and Rec cost recovery increases. But it is the way to tie funding to those using, or tie the cost to those using the services. You know, I think Aaron's approach is not as aggressive of approach as John's, but the goal is to get back to a more industry standard. And you've already increased that quite a bit, yes, Aaron, from, I don't remember, your number's off the top of my head, but we're going that way. So, Aaron will present that soon.
And I understand, but that's a department. And to return to-
But it's the one where we're really under industry standard. So, that's where I see the opportunity in looking at the numbers on how to get there. And again, I think he can do it. It's whether the commission, because they'll be here.
We're under industry standard for firefighters as well, for their staffing. So, like-
Well, we'll propose to increase it if we want.
Jason just said, people who look at our bond rating may be concerned about level of cash reserves. I mean, so I think those are all we need-
Right, but what I suggested wouldn't affect, wouldn't affect it.
That's, what?
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get the challenge, something to work towards.
So, what are you, what are you proposing that, how would it look on a motion or something like that?
Like, take the cost recovery up.
So, John's suggesting that it's about, what, 389,000 is what John's number, $400,000? And were you suggesting lowering the mill levy or by that amount? No, just keeping that in banking on that.
It adds into his reserve number.
Okay. So, the mill levy doesn't change?
No, it's just, it's hopeful, it's hopeful-
I'm trying to compromise as much as possible.
I understand.
John's compromising. He's still gonna vote no on it, but John is over here compromising. So, what John's saying is booking that as some, as revenue, as additional revenue to get that cash balance reserve where we're at. That's what you're suggesting.
You don't have a risk.
Additional revenue. He's not cutting anything.
Changing. It's just putting a goal out there and something to shoot for versus, oh, we'll try a little on the side to do it.
But I don't, that doesn't have to be, that decision doesn't have to be made today if we're not reducing the mill by it. You don't think that that can wait, that's not an October discussion? Because if we're not gonna change the mill, which, I mean, I'm not changing the mill by that amount, then if we're, if we're gonna bank on that for-
I find if we kick, if we go to the next, we'll just go to the next and go to the next.
But it doesn't, it doesn't lower the bottom line at all?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. So, it really doesn't affect what we would be voting on tonight?
You can make it affect it. You can make your motion such.
So, but-
Jason's biting his tongue down.
That doesn't change anything in the ordinance, so it doesn't change-
No. I'd like to move we approve ordinance number 7719, adopting the 2025 city budget, and resolution number 091724C, adopting the 2025-2029 capital improvement program, CIP.
Is there a second?
John, what did you say?
Well, is part of this passing a budget to grant those outside agencies those increases?
She didn't move with any changes, so yes.
So, because that was another one we could do and put into reserve and wait till later if we wanted.
City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Opel?
No.
Commissioner Mata?
No.
Commissioner Mitten?
No, I want to leave the TGT, in TGT and for us to set up. Huh?
Just say no.
No. Thanks, Jason.
Mayor Adam Check?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion failed, two to three.
Okay, I'm gonna move that we approve ordinance number 7719, adopting the 2025 city budget, and resolution number 0291724-C, adopting the 2025-2029 capital improvement program with the TGT funds staying in TGT. program with the TGT funds staying in TGT to be distributed after further discussion with the TGT fund recipients. Can I say it like that?
You say denying the increase.
So you're going to pass a budget with an undefined line item within the transient guest tax allocation. You're going to, you're putting it off to a future date. It won't change the numbers that I believe we submit to the county for a budget.
Right.
You do have end-of-year contracts with every entity receiving those funds. So, I mean, I don't think your motion's a whole lot different than what Karen.
It wasn't. I was, I was worried. We had all just discussed the.
You are basically telling them their end-of-year contracts are to be determined based on the budgeted amount that was approved.
So we can approve up to that amount? Can we approve with a resolution or something that would?
Well, let's just ask this question. Does it make any difference which way it's approved, whether or not they end up getting the money?
It just sets us up for the contracts we're going to bring back at the end of the year. We typically have resolution tonight because it gives them an indication, it gives staff an indication of where to bring those contracts back for operating 2025. If you're not changing the budgeted amount and you're not, like, holding them to 2024 cash, 2024 budgeted amount or contractual amounts, and you're going to put, you know, the budgeted amount would stay the same in the fund, even if you kept it in a reserve, if it's this TGT cash balance. So tonight typically is direction from you all. So everybody who's proposed a budgeted amount for 2025 knows, are they getting it or not? But if you're essentially telling, if you're telling the transient guest tax recipients that is undetermined, I believe we can still pass the budget with that allocation present in the TGT, giving the commission flexibility in 2025 through those contracts. Would you agree, Rena?
I would agree. It's something similar to what we're doing with CIS Fab for social services advisory board and special alcohol. But again, we do need to have that information and before December. That number needs to be known in terms of what we are going to give those agencies.
I guess my question still comes down to, if we were to have, say, one of the three of us voted yes on the last one, would we have been bound to give them that money?
No. Oh, I messed that up. I thought we.
Okay. Then it doesn't, then it really doesn't matter.
Your end-of-year contract set forth what your expectations are for 2025.
And I would guess that the recipients have taken the measure of the room and may come back with some different numbers.
Or accountability.
Or indicators of accountability, which I think we're all in agreement on, that that would not be a bad thing. I've not heard anything from any of the recipients that they would object to having some objective numeric quantifiable indicators to demonstrate how those funds have been used and what their product has been.
Guys, I apologize for messing that up. That was, I thought we had to have that clarification.
I just would say, we have all, I think we've all agreed, we need measurable outcomes. And there's no question about that, but it doesn't have much to do with the mill levy.
So I have to remove to, I can't just switch my vote to a yes.
You just need to move, it can be the same motion, and if that's what you want to approve.
If this, if this motion is not seconded, it dies. So.
Start over, do it.
Okay. So I move to approve ordinance number 7719, adopting the 2025 city budget and resolution number 091724-C, adopting the 2025-2029 capital improvement program.
Second.
City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mata?
No.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
We need two more motions on the salary ordinance and the MOU.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we want to do public comment on that?
Is there any public comment on the, sorry, the commission will now consider salary ordinance for 2025, approving the first reading of the salary ordinance, which basically states that there will be, may I say that? No cost of living increases for staff in the year to come. Is there a motion to?
Just looking for public comment.
Public comment? Okay. Motion to move to consider this?
I'll move to approve the first reading of the 2025 salary ordinance.
Second.
City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
No, I think they should have a cost of living.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
I would like to use my prerogative to please, to extend our gratitude to all of the department heads who are here tonight. We appreciate the sacrifice that your staffs are making. And please let them know, we, they may not be doing it willingly, but we appreciate that that is an action that they have agreed to. We have a third motion to consider changes to a memo of agreement with Local 2275 International Association of Firefighters.
I move approval of resolution number 091724D.
Seconded.
City clerk, will you please, sorry, public comment? City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Recuse myself.
Thank you all.
Motion carries four to zero to one.
And one more item. Our city attorney, Katie Jackson, will be attending the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference here at the end of the month. I don't believe anybody else from the city is going. There are voting rights, and last year, she did represent us and voted for the city. I'm looking for concurrence from the commission this evening for Katie to have those voting rights.
I concur.
Yep.
You all are fine with that.
So what are the voting items or gist of?
They're, the body, every member city will vote on the statement of municipal policy, which the league adopts every year. And then if there's like any, the budget and any bylaw changes, pretty standard.
Okay.
Is this, I'm happy to take any comments if the commission has any.
Someone wants to read through all that?
Yes, I'm happy to take all comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, before we adjourn, I would just like to express my appreciation to members of the public who appeared before us two weeks ago and again tonight for your, expressing your concerns about the tax increase. Please understand, we recognize the impact that this has on individuals. We are trying to be responsible regarding the overall budget and financial health for the entire city. Is there a motion to adjourn, please?
I move we adjourn September 17, 2024, city commission meeting.
Second.
City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.